Bring our September fourteenth Board Trustees meeting in order. Let's right, please.
Aye.
Thank you. Roll call please, Crystal.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Jerome. Trustee Kenny.
Present.
Trustee McDonald. Trustee Whitehouse.
Here.
Mayor Protam Knutson. Mayor Hammond.
Here. Any members of the agenda that we need to be aware of tonight? Nope, okay, any conflicts of interest we need to bring up? Okay. This moves on to the public comment part of this meeting tonight. We'll move individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items tonight or ask to come up forward and sign your name and the podium and your address. Once you're called upon, please say your name. You'll have three minutes to talk on non-agenda items tonight. So anyone that come up here and talk, now's your chance. Okay, close the public meeting tonight. There are no presentations tonight. Okay. Consent agenda, minutes on the August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one board meetings. Are there any issues with this consent agenda that we need no one to make any changes?
There was a minor issue. I think Ms. Tippett's last name was misspelled in the comment on the the financial, what's the word I'm looking for? Audit, thank you. I think her last name was misspelled on that. That's the only thing I caught.
Anyone else? Okay, that being said, can I get a motion to approve the August twenty-fourth, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one board meeting?
So moved.
Let me get a second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny. Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Okay, action items. D one. Microphone on, yes, okay. Wellington Colorado Main Streets Program Funding Requests. Road closure. Kelly.
Yes, good evening, Board of Trustees, Callie Cooper, Executive Director of the Wellington Main Street Program. I am here tonight seeking a funding or seeking a request for funding assistance for the road closure of Cleveland Avenue for the Trick or Treat Down Main Street Event on Sunday, October thirty-first from two to six P M. The actual event will run from three until five P M., but the road closure will take place from two to six. The total amount that I am requesting tonight is one thousand dollars. The Wellington Main Street Program and the Wellington Chamber of Commerce will be sharing the remaining costs of the road closure. This was estimated at roughly four thousand dollars. However, we were notified on Monday morning that Karnes, the company that we typically use for traffic control, went out of business. So we are seeking an alternative company to provide that traffic control for us. Thankfully, we do have the plan already in place from Karnes. So that will just need to be transferred to another company. So it's already been developed. So I'm not sure exactly what that cost will be going to a different company. We have already contacted the Wellington Fire Protection District to notify them of the intent to close Cleveland Avenue, and I have developed a plan with Deputy Fire Marshal Everett Pettit to ensure access for the fire department during the event. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Or remember, any questions for Kelly?
This was such an awesome event last year. We had a ton of fun. So, thank you for planning.
Thank you, yeah, it was very important to both the Main Street Board and the Chamber Board to close the road for this event, simply because of how it went last year. And because we did feel that it was vital to the safety of all of the participants for that event.
Do you have any idea when you might get a second, a backup quote? Obviously, everyone's busy and this just happened. Any, any sense of that?
Again, I just, we just found out about yesterday morning. I'm in contact with a company out of Loveland and a company out of Greeley that was recommended by the Public Works Department. They are companies that the town has used before.
So the one thousand's in addition in the four thousand?
The one thousand is part of the four thousand, so.
Thousand total is going to take care of it?
Yes. I hope, yes.
Yeah, right?
Yes, based on hoping that the cost is at least mostly similar company to company.
You've got contingency for that in case, you know, I mean.
The Main Street Board has agreed to to put up the funds and the point five K fund run that is going to be in October, at the beginning of October, proceeds from that event will go to help fund that.
Yeah. Cause you're coming to the well now, if you need more, we need to talk about it now.
If I may, Mayor and Trustees, an option could be to provide a not to exceed amount. So potentially not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars or something like that. This money, there is funds available in the Board Discretionary Fund, which is, was set up for this purpose. So if you would like to authorize and not to exceed amount, it might be helpful with issues moving forward because things will be moving quickly.
I kind of agree with that, you know?
Could it be like a third of the cost not to exceed two thousand, something like that, in case it does go high?
We want to make sure we get it, right?
I think, I think that makes sense.
Two thousand?
That would be lovely.
Think you got support for that? Okay, let's just see what the public got in with things saying on it. Anyone from the public want to talk about it? If you liked it, you like it, okay? Bring it, we'll bring it back to the board. Let's go ahead and put it to a vote.
I move that we approve a funding request for the Wellington, Colorado Main Streets Program in support of the downtown Main Street Event for Trick or Treating in the amount of one-third the cost for the traffic control costs not to exceed two thousand dollars.
Point of information. So are there two resolutions, one's for funding and one is for street closures? Am I understanding this correctly?
Okay, thank you.
First one's funding, right? Roll call for the funding.
Thank you.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Well, now we're going to talk about the road closure, right?
Correct. Two separate actions.
Anything special? Same as last year?
Correct. It'll look just a little different than last year, but this, the street will be closed all the same, so.
Got any questions on the road closure then?
No, sir. Not a question, but if you could just do it, I know we all know this, but if you just do a quick overview, so if anyone watching this is wondering what on earth we're talking about? If you could just give a quick summary, that'd be great.
Absolutely, so for the Trick or Treat Down Main Street Event, la- last year, what we did was we closed Cleveland Avenue from Sixth Street to First Street, as well as access to all of the side streets. The traffic was rerouted down Highway nine and down, and then down Sixth Street to avoid going down Cleveland Avenue. We typically close the road for an hour before and an hour after the event to allow for setup and tear down.
Anything else? Okay. Public comment on this item, D one, D two. All right then, let's bring it back to the board. Let's get a motion to approve Resolution number twenty-seven dash twenty-twenty-one. The road closure from portions of Cleveland Highway, Highway one.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny. Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. For the record.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam Knutson's in. Look forward to it. That was a little fun last year. Okay, our next one, D three, this is Wellington, Colorado Boys and Girls Club of Laramie County Funding Request, twenty-twenty-two Budget. Casey. Been a while.
It has, good evening, everybody. It's great to be here, nice to see all the Board of Trustees and the mayor again. So I'm here tonight to provide an update on Boys and Girls Clubs in Laramie County, but most specifically Wellington, and ask for a funding consideration. I'm not sure if we, there is a slide deck, but I'll just, no problem. Thank you. So just to give you a little brief update, and we can probably go to about slide four, actually. Throughout two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-one, Boys and Girls Clubs, both in Laramie County and here in Wellington, really committed to doing whatever it took to serve our community. We wanted to make sure that young people, despite whatever they would be facing throughout this, always had a safe place to go. So right away during that, when the shutdown happened initially in March of two thousand and twenty, we stayed open. We made sure that especially our first responders, especially those who were on the front lines deemed essential workers. If they needed to work, they could bring their kids to the Boys and Girls Club so that they didn't have to make that tough choice of leaving their kids at home unintended and, and potentially suffer work loss. So we stayed open here in Wellington, we helped with food distribution. In total, across Laramie County, we were open over five hundred additional hours from March of two thousand and twenty, all the way until I think kids went back around last January-ish, but we stayed open that entire time to provide remote learning. Again, meals, weekend support, anything that kids and families might need. In doing that, we also launched about seven new locations across Laramie County to make sure that if kids couldn't get access to a site because of potentially transportation barriers, that they could still get access to the services that were provided by Boys and Girls Club. We did that in Wellington as well by operating out of both of the elementary schools to make sure that young people could get there and that we weren't, you know, compromised by ratios or anything like that. And then we also launched a new partnership, well, actually, if you go to the next slide, I'll talk just a little bit about Wellington. So in Wellington, in the last two years, we've served nearly four, or three hundred and fifty kids. We serve kids between the ages of six to eighteen years old, primarily school age, and we charge twenty dollars per year per child. We strategically keep that cost low so that financial barriers is no reason for a child not to have access to Boys and Girls Clubs. When they're at the club, they get access to all of these great programs, opportunities. It always includes meals. We're really focused on workforce development, character and leadership, academics, all of the things that make a great out-of-school experience fun, but also engaging, so it helps to put kids on a path for success in the future. The next slide talks about a new partnership that we're doing with Wellington Middle School. So you all are very familiar with the program Eagles After Hours, which was led by Christie Bruker for years, an incredible program. Throughout this COVID nineteen pandemic and remote learning, we actually partnered with Wellington Middle School to help provide a remote learning center at the middle school. And in doing so, really started talking about what a larger partnership could be once things, you know, return back to normal. And so on Monday, we will be opening the first Eagles Club, which is going to be a satellite Boys and Girls Club location strategically and dedicated to serve Wellington Middle School that will essentially replace and enhance the Eagles After Hours. And so that's been a really fun program. We're anticipating serving about fifty kids a day and specifically designing it for Wellington Middle School students with an emphasis on workforce. The next slide just talks a little bit about the impact when we look at young people and when we look at families. So we ask kids on a regular basis how they're doing or how their experience is with Boys and Girls Clubs, both from an academic standpoint and from just how they're feeling. And through this survey, year over year, we see kids indicating really strong connections to school, really strong resiliency and social and emotional coping mechanisms, as well as really strong desires for leading healthy lifestyles and potentially avoiding some risky behaviors. So those are some key metrics that we look at all the time because we want to make sure if a young person is out of school, that they're in an environment that's safe and of course, in an environment that is stimulating and putting them in, on a path for a great future, as well as building the skills that they might need for the future. Additionally, when we look at our impact, we also consider that of families. Because we charge twenty dollars per year per child, we're able to save families on average between eight thousand and fifteen thousand per year per child. That amount of money is money that families can put on a down payment, that they can use for rent, utilities, going out to eat, stimulating a local economy. It is critical that our families, especially in Northern Colorado, especially during a pandemic, especially when things are very unsettling, don't have to worry about childcare. And we all know that childcare is one of the most exorbitant costs here in Northern Colorado. I believe the average cost for before and after-school care for one child is a hundred and eighty-eight dollars per week. So if you have more than two, or if you have more than one child, that cost significantly adds up and of course, can compound when we look at healthcare and housing and all those other things that are expensive. So all of that to say, when we look at our budget, so the next slide talks a little bit about the overall budget specific to Wellington. So just to run the Wellington Boys and Girls Club, along with Eagles After Hours, the total for our annual budget is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so what we're here to do tonight is ask for this, this board to consider an annual gift, and I'll explain that in a second, but an annual gift of twenty-five thousand dollars to be broken down in three ways. The first one is five thousand dollars dedicated to programming, that supplies, that's technology, computers, the things that we use to help make homework help really robust. That is some of the supplies that we use in the art room, gym, all of those types of things. It's the supplies that kids use. The second one is transportation, three thousand dollar request for transportation. That is to get kids to and from the club. We run two van routes a day because we can't, because transportation shortages or bus driver shortages has allowed the students from Rice to not be bused anymore. So we've taken that on ourselves. And then the final cost is that seventeen thousand dollar ask is dedicated for frontline staff members working directly with kids. This is not administration, this is not overhead costs at all. It is for staff members working directly with kids delivering these programs in Wellington. The consideration is for that twenty-five thousand dollars is also, we put in here annual, but I certainly recognize that historically, we've come in on a regular basis and asked for money on an annual basis. And we'd be happy to do that as well if that would be preferred. No, and I say that knowing that budgets and priorities and things like that can change. So again, the board has historically supported both, both the Boys and Girls Club and Eagles After Hours. This is a one-time, this budget year joint request ask for both of those programs. So I'll pause there if there are any questions.
Any questions, Casey? Or members?
I love the pictures in here, I recognize most of the kids from the Wellington sites and, and kids I see around town, so it's very cool. Thank you.
So I did have a couple of questions. I know you'd mentioned that we have historically funded both Boys and Girls Club and Eagles After Hours, and I am aware of the Eagles After Hours, we believe, I believe, we've given five thousand dollars a year to that. What is the amount? Cause that wasn't included here and I didn't find it in the budget that we have given to the Boys and Girls Club.
It's ranged from, I believe, three thousand dollars to five thousand dollars. Specifically, the historical funding has been around a program called Got What It Takes, which was a workforce development program specific in the summer where kids got stipend. This request is a little bit unique in that we're asking for the operational funds that I described in here.
Trustee Gator, you're good? You know, that's it? I personally like to see you come back each year and give us an update.
Sure.
So we can see how things are going and see these good photos that come up every time and talk about new things myself, absolutely. And I think it's worthy of doing that and you sharing for this, what's going on, cause I really like the program. I think bundling up with Eagles is a great idea, should have happened a long time ago. You know, and I, I think that they appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm excited about it, but.
I think the value of Boys and Girls Club to our community is, is huge. The facilities alone that they have are, is amazing. Everybody's seen the new building that they've, they have and the services that provide our community. I think one thing that I always think about and why maybe I value Boys and Girls Club so much in Wellington specifically is that we don't have a lot of the other services that the, to assist with childcare or anything like that, maybe the county would support, but we don't have those in Wellington. So there's other county services available that can help with childcare, that can help with these workforce programs, but none of them are in Wellington. So I think they're throughout the county and other places, but they're not actually here. So to have a resource like this in our community and then to put the focus specifically towards and more so towards the middle school students, I think is huge. And I'm thinking of, this year alone, I think it's a fantastic idea. Looking at the high school and some of the workforce functions and trade opportunities and learning that we're going to have at our middle school and high school going forward. I think that this program is so vital and special to Wellington and we can optimize it and we're going to see our kids do amazing things. So, and I've always been a supporter of Boys and Girls Club and I see the amazing things that happen with my kids and other kids throughout the, throughout the county. And then some of the, the kids in Wellington who have moved on through youth of the year at a state level, straight out of Wellington. And I think that is an immediate response to the talented staff that we have available to help our children. So all this money that I see supporting those kids is repaid countless times for the investment in our, in our kids in the community. So I just wanted to say my, my opinion on these items.
So what is the primary source of funding? Cause I know obviously there's about a three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar gap between the, what families pay and what you're asking us for. So what is the primary source of funding for the Boys and Girls Club?
So for Wellington specific, Sage Homes is a huge partner. Help to name the building helps to support operational costs. So in terms of the buckets that are a part of Wellington specifically, it's individuals and businesses first, and then it's grants. It's grants and foundations, so that, those aren't necessarily located in Wellington, but we write them to, we write those grants and foundations to various sources and channel it or distribute it to Wellington.
Okay, thank you. Are we going to come back and have discussion later, Mayor, or is that now, just so I know what you'd like?
For this topic?
Yes, for this topic. I don't have any further questions, I do have some items to, or concerns.
Let's hear it.
Okay, so I agree that the Boys and Girls Club is a great program. I think that I don't have a problem with continuing as we funded in the past. I know we've done the five thousand dollars for Eagles After Hours, and then it sounds like somewhere between three to five thousand dollars. I do have a challenge with making a jump to twenty-five thousand dollars. We've already got a budget, we talked this last meeting about the changes that we have to make with roads and different things like that, that are things that only the town can do. You know, our, our roads and the high school intersection aren't things that we can go to the businesses and to the citizens and say, hey, please help pay for this. I think that we need to make sure that we as a town are focusing on what our purpose is, as much of the need there is for childcare. I don't see that as a primary purpose of the town to be the primary supporter of that. So I don't see a problem with even maybe up, upping from what we have done in the past, taking over from what's from Eagle After Hours and up, upping that a little bit. But I do have a problem jumping to twenty-five thousand dollars when we're going to be trying to scrape the barrel to find money to pay for these other projects, such as our roads and things like that, that nobody else can pay for. So that is a concern that I have with putting a large chunk of change. And I know twenty-five thousand dollars versus a five million dollar project doesn't sound like much, but when we do several of those and different things, those add up quick. So that's my concern with the amount. So I would be more comfortable if we were to look at maybe somewhere in the eight to ten thousand range.
Okay. Got your comment on that? Are you talking about the twenty-twenty-one budget or are you talking about the twenty-twenty-two budget?
I'm just twenty-twenty-two in, in general with moving forward, because again, this is asking us to consider something that'll be an ongoing thing.
Think that we can actually do an ongoing every year thing. I think it has to be brought back every year for the budgeting process, so. I'm just, was, one clarification, if you're talking about this year's budget or next year's budget.
So I would be speaking towards, I don't know if we're, this is being asked for money this year or for next year. My understanding is this is for consideration in twenty-twenty-two budget year is my understanding from reading through this. So this would be speaking towards next year's budget, but just generally moving forward, I think we need to be focused on what our job as government is that only we can do versus those things in which the community can pitch and help with.
So Mayor and Trustees, if I may, so we've heard the presentation and the ask, and I've heard the comments from Trustee Gator. We are working through the twenty-twenty-two budget as we speak. We will be holding that retreat on October ninth. So I'll work with the budget team, we'll see what we can put in there. Casey and I have been talking back and forth quite a bit over the last couple of months about this item. So we'll see, you know, I, I'm not sure where we're going to flesh out exactly. I know that, you know, those projects are important and things like that, but let's, I think that when we meet for our budget retreat, we can give you some, some scenarios and some options and you can decide how to go from there and just have an open discussion about it.
Yeah, I was gonna, I, I think, I mean, I'm supportive of the twenty-five thousand. I mean, I think this program is very important and it's clear looking at the metrics. You know, about high school, the grades, and I mean, this is demonstratively, this is a benefit. But I, I also take the point from Ms. Garcia that if we're still at this point, maybe we could table this item until we have a little more clarity on the, the budget, so we're, we have a sense of that. Does that, I don't know if other people feel that way or not.
Yes, that's what Casey and I had talked about, that she would make the presentation, make the ask, and then we would work within our, if you were comfortable with us moving forward, we would, the staff would look to see how we could implement any pieces of it into our twenty-twenty-two budget and report back during your retreat on October ninth.
Okay.
One point I do want to make is the largest population in Wellington is young families. So I kind of like, not that has anything to do with me, but I kind of fit the most, the most common scenario in Wellington and the higher, highest percentage of population. So I am in my thirties some things and my kids are elementary and middle school. And that is the largest population groups within Wellington, which is all the service areas that this club currently supports, our biggest population groups in our community. So that is just something that I wanted to bring up. So when it is a question of, is this important to our community as stewards of our, our citizens and recognizing that this organization right now, right here in our town, serves the largest portion of our community, the biggest population that we have here, I think that's something important to acknowledge.
You're good? I, I think it's important to do, Trustee Gator brought it up and look, we need, we have responsibilities going through it. I'm all for it, okay? We don't have a rec center, twenty-five thousand bucks versus what it costs to support a rec center. Not too bad.
We play dodgeball every Friday, so just to be really clear.
I'd like to see you expand it myself, you know, even more with the Eagles After Hours when you get to school. I think you've got more to grow, actually. We don't have a rec center, we got this. So I think we can make something happen, so if you don't mind us waiting.
Of course.
To get through our budgeting process and do it right, that'd be good, I think.
Of course, thank you all so much for your time, appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Move on to item D four.
I don't know, Mayor, but do we need to officially table the item or was, cause it's, okay, thanks.
There was no resolution.
Just wasn't sure.
Just a presentation.
Okay. Here we go, Resolution number twenty-six dash twenty-twenty-one, ratifying adoption of the Wellington Comprehensive Plan, Cody Bird.
Good evening, Mayor, thank you. Cody Bird, Planning Director. This evening, I am presenting a draft resolution proposing ratification of the Wellington Comprehensive Plan twenty-twenty-one adopted by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission adopted the Comprehensive Plan on August second, twenty-twenty-one this year. And the Comprehensive Plan serves as the town's official master plan for the town, which is a guiding document that aids town officials in developing the land use codes, land use decisions that are made by the Planning Commission and Board of Trustees, staff and so forth down the road. The Comprehensive Plan is also the legal foundation for the town's land use code. It's the basis for our zoning, our subdivision regulations. Can you guys hear me okay with the mask on too? Perfect. It serves as the, the legal foundation for zoning subdivision regulations and collectively the land use code. The Comprehensive Plan is defined by Colorado State statutes or state law, which is, which also defines that the requirements of the plan and its adoption. The Comprehensive Plan is identified in the state statutes as being required to be adopted by the Planning Commission. And when developing that Comprehensive Plan, the Planning Commission must meet certain requirements for creation and adoption of the plan. This includes providing public notices, public hearings and collecting written and oral public comments throughout the plan process. In August two thousand and nineteen, the Board of Trustees authorized a contract to engage in professional planning and legal services to facilitate the process for developing the Comprehensive Plan. to facilitate the process for developing the Comprehensive Plan. And the Planning Commission officially began the process of updating the Comprehensive Plan in January of 2020. The Planning Commission engaged with a steering committee consisting of six members representing residents, businesses, Main Street Fire District, Planning Commission, and Board of Trustees uh, to help with or to help throughout the formation of the plan and guide the process. The public has provided input and guidance to help shape the plan through stakeholder meetings, questionnaires, online quick polls, public meetings, a town hall, personal communications and more. Uh, these public engagement activities began in February 2020 and continued throughout the planning process through to adoption. A draft of the Comprehensive Plan was presented for, uh, to the public for review on March 9, 2021. And public comments were accepted using an online platform for public engagement. If after evaluation of the public comments incorporating those comments into the plan, a new revised draft was presented uh, on June 18, 2021. Planning Commission scheduled a public hearing and held that hearing in July of this year. Excuse me. These masks. Excuse me, thank you. Um, the Planning Commission scheduled and held a public hearing on July 12, 2021 this year, following advertisement in the town's official newspaper, The Coloradoan. Following public testimony at the July meeting, the Planning Commission voted to table the public hearing to August 2 to allow additional public comments and for staff to engage specifically with the downtown residents to get their feedback on a couple of plan elements. All said, this was over 18 months of public discussion and engagement. The Planning Commission received more than 2,000 written comments from more than 200 unique individuals in this process, as well as countless more verbal communications from stakeholder meetings, public forums, and meetings with individuals and groups. Following public hearing at the August 2 meeting, the Planning Commission voted to adopt the Wellington Comprehensive Plan 2021. The Planning Commission's adoption of that Comprehensive Plan makes it the official Comprehensive Plan for the town. Because of the plan's importance to the development of the community and its role in guiding land use decisions and the formation of the land use code. It is a best practice and recommendation for the Board of Trustees to ratify the Comprehensive Plan. There's a draft resolution in your board packet tonight that proposes ratification of the Comprehensive Plan. That draft resolution is intended to acknowledge that the Planning Commission is the body authorized by state law and the Board of Trustees to adopt a Comprehensive Plan. It acknowledges that state law has certain requirements necessary for the adoption of a Comprehensive Plan. And it acknowledges that the Planning Commission met or exceeded the statutory requirements in adopting the Comprehensive Plan. And that the Comprehensive Plan, as adopted by the Planning Commission, is the official policy of the town. Just as a reminder, uh, the Planning Commission went through this extensive process, knowing that the next step in that process is updating the land use code. Uh, the Board of Trustees ultimately adopts the land use code, uh, following recommendations from the Planning Commission. So there's still more work to be done. Um, but tonight we're just asking for adoption of a resolution ratifying the Comprehensive Plan adoption by the Planning Commission. I'll be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions? What on this side? John.
May I ask what the vote ratio was from the Plan Commission? Was it unanimous?
The Planning Commission had one abstention from a member who wasn't able to attend all the meetings.
Very.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone over here?
No questions.
No questions, concerns, but you got concerns?
Yes.
He's here, that's here. Okay.
So I understand that the process and thank you to our town attorney for clarifying a little bit of what is being asked. It was very helpful. So thank you very much. Um, and I don't have an issue with the fact that the Planning Commission did follow the proper legal process. What I do have an issue with is, um, there were a lot of issues I had throughout the process. But the main thing that I had is while we did have public forums, we have two specific examples that I'll point to. We had one group of individuals in a neighborhood that was zoned for commercial initially, or zoned, was planned for commercial in the Comprehensive Plan. Um, never petitioned the Planning Commission. They came to one town hall, the Board of Trustees, their requests were granted. We had another group of citizens who came with similar concerns about the way that their area of town, their neighborhood was planned. And they petitioned the Planning Commission multiple times. They petitioned this board multiple times. And the Planning Commission basically ended by stating that those individuals would need to wait for the land use code for that to actually make these changes that were promised to them. So in essence, one set of citizens was listened to, their request was granted, another set of citizens was told, basically, the Board of Trustees will make it right in the land use code. So I have some major issues with how the Planning Commission handled that. And as such, I do not feel comfortable ratifying this because we have two very disparate areas. You know, we had the president of the Planning Commission was in one neighborhood, that neighborhood was listened to, the other neighborhood was in some ways listened to, but ultimately their requests were said, well, we'll deal with this later. So from that standpoint, we haven't resolved what was told the citizens. So I do not feel comfortable ratifying this.
Um, Trustee Gator, are you suggesting that there's something that, and with the Pheasant Run, something inappropriate?
I would hope that there's not, but there was a very disparate difference in the way that the requests from Pheasant Run were handled to the requests from the citizens of the town, town neighborhoods. So the reasoning behind that, I don't know, but it is concerning that they were not handled in the same manner.
I want to note that there were over 2,000 comments from over 200 unique folks, which resulted in significant changes throughout the entire document. Um, so when we're talking about two concerns in particular that were talked through thoroughly and required additional attention and additional meetings to review and consider, um, I think that the Planning Commission, uh, did their due diligence in pursuing every major theme that was brought to them as feedback. If, for those who had the opportunity to read first draft, second draft and final, um, it was very significant changes based on those specific pieces of feedback. So, uh, including those associated with the downtown neighborhood, which is the other one. Those are also very significant changes that ended in the final draft. I do want to note, though, that the content of the Comprehensive Plan isn't necessarily the topic of this action item. It's more for, um, the process and us ratifying the the process and the the body of who makes these decisions based on state statute. So I do want to make sure that we're not detouring too much from the purpose of this action item.
Want to weigh in on any of that? Nope.
No, thank you.
We're just here to ratify. I I I I'll say one last thing myself. I thought that we really tried very hard to make this thing work for the downtown people. We met a lot of times, heard their concerns, heard the comments. There's a little bit difference in 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 the areas versus the other one. But I thought that at the end, we 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 got to where everybody was satisfied. I really thought that we left with that.
That entire part was completely redone.
Point of order. Can can we speak of this topic as trustees, not as members of the Planning Commission? Because, um, what you guys discussed needs to be brought to us by the the chairman of the Planning Commission, not members. So opinions and stuff I don't think are are prudite at this point. These are discussions for the Board of Trustees, not for the Planning Commission.
Sure, absolutely. And all those, all those drafts and versions were public viewed documents as well. So, um.
All right. We're here to ratify the thing. Anything else? Okay, there's public comment at this point. One of us to come up.
Christine Gator, Downtown Core. Um, I guess I'm talking to those who are not on the Planning Commission about the people in Downtown Core. We specifically asked, let me just start here. Planning Commissioners promised that downtown citizens' concerns would be addressed in the land use code. But we just found out that the land use code is approved by the board, not by the Planning Commission. So basically, the Planning Commission promised us something they cannot deliver. Therefore, what we're asking for is that the Planning Commission, what the Planning Commission could have done but chose not to do, these two things. One, we asked and they did not do designate Harrison and McKinley as part of the downtown neighborhood on the land use map and in the comp word, uh, comp plan wording. And number two, designate downtown neighborhood as low-density residential housing. Um, and I'm asking tonight, since you guys do the land use code, um, for a promise in writing that this will be done for the land use code. Um, and then I speak for several of my neighbors and they have signed this. Can I get a promise?
What question? Town Attorney? So my understanding from discussions that have been here tonight and in previous places. The Planning Commission is the body that approves this plan, correct?
That's correct.
So we're not asking to approve this, we're just asking, being asked to ratify what they've already approved. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, because I don't see a Comprehensive Plan in front of me tonight. It wasn't part of our packet. So we're not discussing any of those points of order, of of information. We're just being asked to ratify what our appointed commission has already approved. So, um, I guess I just wanted to get very, you know, very clear, clear on that so that we all know what we're talking about. This is not the Board of Trustees approving the Comprehensive Plan. It's us ratifying something that's already been approved.
Correct? That's correct.
Okay.
Hey.
Thank you for your comments. Um, there is no items who who have currently for land use in front of us. So there's, and there's none available for review. So there's nothing for us to agree to or not at this point.
Yeah, so just to clarify that, uh, from what I hear from the board is we will not be promising to honor the word of the Planning Commission. Because at this point, we have not gone through the land use code. So no such promise can be made by this board. Is that correct?
That's correct. We've got quite a process to go through, just if not more than the other one.
So you're not going to listen to the downtown citizens? Oh, you're going to listen to us, but you're not going to?
Well, we have to go through a process, Christine. You know, it's got to go through, it's got to go through a tax community. It's got a lot of processes to go through.
Doesn't run to not have to go through the the amount of meetings that the downtown people have had to go to, and they're sick and tired of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Second legal question. If the Board of Trustees does not ratify this, what happens? It's still an approved Comprehensive Plan.
Per state statute, excuse me, per state statute, the master plan of the municipality is adopted by the Planning Commission. So if the board does not ratify this, it is still the official policy of the town of Wellington. What this process does is it helps clarify that as items that are in that Comprehensive Plan will be used to guide your decisions as a Board of Trustees and also guide the land use code going, uh, process going forward. So whether this is ratified or not, the Planning Commission has adopted the Comprehensive Plan, um, and that Planning Commission was appointed by this Board of Trustees.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Okay. There's nothing further to say on this issue tonight. I look for motion to approve, um, Resolution number 26 dash 2021, ratifying the adoption of the Wellington Comprehensive Plan. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
No.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on. D5. Ordinance number 10 dash 2021. This is an ordinance repealing, revising and re-adopting Article 13 of Chapter 2 of the Wellington Municipal Code concerning the Wellington Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Yeah.
On, excuse me, on August 17, um, at a work, at a work session, the Board of Trustees considered, uh, proposed changes to various boards and commissions of the town of Wellington. Staff took that guidance and immediately started taking a look at our existing boards and commissions and thinking about how to implement that conversation into new ordinances. And that's why on August 24, we came, we included in the packet, this ordinance that's in front of you. And as soon as we put it in the packet, we realized that, uh, we'd jumped the gun just a little bit. And we want to make sure that as we were, before we brought an ordinance to the board that would modify an existing commission or board, we ought to talk to that board about it. So we asked you to table that, um, on August 24 and immediately contacted the Parks, uh, Parks Advisory Board to make sure we got on their agenda, have a conversation with the Parks Advisory Board on how uh, that board might be changed in the future. So the proposed ordinance is in your packet. It is, oops, I have to get to the right page. Um, the significant changes in this ordinance, this ordinance makes to the makeup of the Parks Advisory Board is it changes the subject matter of the Parks Advisory Board from the Parks Advisory Board to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, which is because the division has turned now into the Parks and Recreation Division. It changes membership. It removes the current trustee member as a voting member of that board and moves that member to becoming an a liaison member. And then it increases the size of the board by one. So there would be seven appointed voting members and the one liaison member. Changes membership requirements so that instead of the current requirement that the member live within seven miles of the town of Wellington to be included within the growth management area as discussed by this board. And it makes some other changes to to the to the areas of responsibility of that board. So it took us to the Parks Advisory Board on September 8 for discussion, and we had some good conversations with that board. Some of the areas of concern that they brought up were one member, um, at one time lived outside of the growth, at growth management area, the GMA. Um, but they would have lived, they did live within that seven mile radius. That person now lives within the GMA. So that isn't quite a concern there. But they they were concerned that that would reduce the opportunity for participation from people who might be interested in parks and rec that are outside the town limits. Uh, we had some good conversations there about maybe finding other opportunities for those individuals to be involved in town activities, be involved in parks and recreation, uh, projects. There's also concerns addressed, um, from a member who wasn't at the meeting, but we did have quite an extensive discussion about it, about the process for removal of members of the board. Um, I believe the, the text of the proposed ordinance says, uh, members may be removed from office for inefficiency, neglect of duty or malfeasance upon written notice and after public hearing held during a regular or special Board of Trustees meeting. So, um, the concern that the board member raised, that the board member raised was, that's not very specific. They want something maybe more specific before somebody is automatically removed from the board. And I wanted to highlight it in that meeting that there is no process for automatic removal of anybody for any reason, um, from this board. The language is is relatively vague, but it's very, and it's permissive. If a member should be removed, or if that person then has to be brought before this board here, the Board of Trustees for a public hearing. So there's no automatic removal. It's it's relatively a fuzzy standard. Um, but there's a reason for that. We didn't want anything where there was five absences and then they might have to be kicked off the board automatically. So, um, this language is pretty standard. We thought it might be addressed pretty well within the bylaws of that board, um, the thing about how they up run their own meetings. So. Generally, the, I'd say it was very favorable at the Parks and, the Parks Advisory Board for this. So we asked for adoption of this ordinance and we'll bring more ordinance to modify other planning or other commissions and boards later.
Any questions?
Got a question. How does Mr. Campos, uh, because he's, he's directly over the, will be the PRAB now. Was he, is he supportive of this move? Or is he not?
I'll say that he's not against this move. I mean, he and I had some good conversations about how this would operate. Um, I did not ask him for his specific yea or nay. But, uh, I think we had some good conversations about it.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Gator?
Yeah, so I did have a couple of questions. Did we, I know we had changed for some of the boards, the terms to four years. Was this one of the boards that had that change as well?
That is.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify on that. And then, um, it looks good. Um, so overall, it sounds like they're favorable towards most of things. I do share, I appreciate that we actually have something in here now that talks about how someone is removed. I think that's good. Um. I personally feel that we should have that be, I I agree, it doesn't need to be an automatic dismissal, but we need to spell out what is what is defined as inefficiency. And even if that's okay, if they missed 25% or more meetings unexcused, not that that's an automatic, but that could be, right? They could still be brought up because the concern They could still be brought up because the concern I have is that to me, this is again, very fuzzy. And I don't want there to become a situation where there's years down the road where for whatever reason it gets political and someone decides we want this person off the board. So we're going to make up this while they're inefficient because of X, Y, and Z. There's no clear call out as to what is defined. I think the malfeasance, that one's, um, you know, they're doing things that are illegal, but I think the inefficiency or neglect of duty, we should spell at least a minimum on that. Is it's, to me, it simply could be, you know, they've missed twenty five percent or more of meetings in a, in a calendar year. So if, you know, if you have twelve meetings in a year and you've missed four of those, then to me, that would be a cause for concern if now if it's, you know, I have a family member who's dealing with cancer in the hospital and that's a perfectly valid reason to be missing those meetings. But if it's, you know, I was just on vacation every time or decided not to come because I wanted to watch my TV show. Then that starts to get into more something. So I, I would prefer if we could spell some of that out and remove a little bit of that fuzziness.
We, we had that conversation, um, at the parks advisory board meeting, um, almost, almost exactly. Um, and, and especially with absences, there is an issue of, you know, what is excused versus unexcused, but there are good excuses for missing meetings. Absolutely. For, for, for sure. Um, and also a person could miss a meeting, but still be active in kind of the, the, the work that's being done there. And the discussion there really led to the parks advisory board thought it could, and it should, take a look, close look at its own bylaws and kind of the process where it recommends perhaps removal of a, one of its members. Um, and that might be a better place to spell those things out a little bit better. Becomes then a, an internal process where the parks advisory board or any advisory board, those members define for themselves what is enough participation. So then they would recommend somebody's removal to this board, and then this board would still have to have that public hearing. So we thought maybe that would be better. If we're going to get really specific, allow each board to kind of form its own standards, um, there. Uh, of course, this board could remove a person, um, with a public hearing, pretty much.
So I guess the, that makes sense and I don't have a problem with that. Is there a way then to put into the ordinance that we're going to pass that those definitions for inefficiency? Malfeasance, I think that should be, we don't need to find that by the individual boards, but I think inefficiency or neglect of duty, if we are not going to spell that out, we need to then point to the bylaws of that board to say, because, because if we as a board of trustees decide we are going to take action and we're going to remove someone for inefficiency, what, what is that? Is that our own made up definition of inefficiency or are we bound to what that board has set out in place? Does that make sense?
That would, it would be your definition. What I'm saying is in the bylaws, the parks advisory board could recommend, could create its own process for how they would recommend whether somebody should be removed. Once it comes to this board, this board becomes the
Correct.
interpreter of what that means. Um, this board also decides who gets to sit on that board and the, on that advisory board in the first place. So I, 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 I'm not sure quite how I would spell that out more clearly in here without then making it a almost automatic removal. So I, I, I'm.
Yeah. And I, I get that and I agree. I don't want an automatic removal, but I, what bothers me is that there's this, I, I, I agree with you. I think spelling out in the bylaws is a great way to go about that. You know, you need to make this number of meetings and this number of meetings. And that's for the parks advisory board, but you know, that we could wind up with a board of trustees where they just decide, well, this person missed one meeting and we're going to call it inefficiency. And now we remove them, even though bylaws say four. We've, that, I, I, again, this is a part of case that I hope would never happen, but that's my concern when we have this vague, that can happen. If a majority of board members decide, we don't like this person, we're going to just pick them off because they missed one meeting. We're going to call it inefficiency because while they missed a meeting, that's the concern I have.
Uh, a further concern I would have though would be if we spell that out within this ordinance for the parks advisory board, is there a different definition of inefficiency that we might need to use in a different board? And so we're using, we're going to use the same language. I mean, that's part of this process is we want to have very uniform uh, language throughout. And so I, so perhaps there would be a, um, somewhere else to do that. I, I would.
The question I have is, so for example, could we say maybe removed from office for inefficiency, neglect of duty as defined by bylaws of said board? And then that can be planning commission, P A B, board of adjustments, and then you just change, and then we then as a board of trustees, as long as they meet the inefficiency as defined in the bylaws of that specific board, we can, if the board doesn't recommend them for removal, we could then enforce and we don't have to change it on each.
What if this board didn't agree with that board's definition? I, I'm, that would be sort of delegating down to that board and I'm trying to think of how, I'm trying to think of how to, how, how maybe to answer that question. I'm, I'm concerned about putting into the town code. Uh, something that refers back to a bylaw that isn't adopted then by this board itself. I mean, that, that's a major concern where you would then essentially be having the law written by the bylaws of that board, which you don't really have a control.
Uh, uh, I had a, I had a question. I mean, with the bylaws generally, would any of these organizations receive any guidance from the town? Usually bylaws are pretty specific. Maybe there's guidance for that. Um, but again, I, I think it's something pretty specific and not sure where they would, to start a process like that by yourself without understanding is, is actually a long process. So I didn't know if they'd receive any guidance or there's any guidance out there or best practices or a template or who knows.
This is the first time I've ever met with the parks advisory board. It was on September. They do have a bylaws in place. Um, and so I think that's something that as we're working on revising, reviewing a lot of these boards and standardizing a lot of the language, I think there will be more of an effort to assist them in creating bylaws. But I, I haven't yet looked at the parks advisory board's bylaws.
So if I may, um, part of the exercise that we went through is we take information from other municipalities. And, and I have learned that these types of ordinances and resolutions are best left broad because we want, people, people want to be part of the government process, but they don't. Most people currently are liking less government. So if we can keep it broad and allow the opportunity for people to serve, um, sometimes I've seen times where inefficiencies, um, can be construed as a lot of different things. And an inefficiency could be not attending. An inefficiency could be considered if you, um, won't participate. You know, or if you're trying to railroad an item and not, you're not being part of the team. So, you know, it's really hard to define what that inefficiency is. And it's best left broad so that, you know, the, the advisory boards can, can work with their members. Um, it's a launching pad sometimes for those that want to be on, be a trustee or on the planning commission. So, you know, and the chair generally, I mean, from what I've learned, there's been times that Crystal and I both worked in Windsor and there were several members that had to be, be let go essentially. Um, and it was brought before the board, before the council at the time, and it was a difficult decision to make. But, you know, it was because they hadn't attended a meeting in eight months. So the chair of the board lets the, lets the staff lie is a no, and you go through the process with your town attorney. So as far as the language, it, it's spot on with what all the other municipalities really have. I mean, and it's left that way and left broad so that the bylaws can be created to support that current board and the bylaws can be changed much easier than coming before the board of trustees and getting a code change.
Other question? Nope.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Turn it over to public comment at this point. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Not having further, no further comment to know of. Uh, go ahead.
So can I ask, um, because this inefficiency really bothers me. I understand where our town minister and town attorney are coming from. Can I ask that we pass this tonight as is? But is it all right that I sit down with maybe the town attorney and town administrator and see if we can find a plausible solution that kind of fits my concerns within, with the vagueness? And then if we can find a good solution, then we bring that back to the board of trustees to amend that at that point, if the board feels. Is that, I would be comfortable with that if it's okay with the board that I talk with our town administrator and town attorney, see, is there a way that we can bridge that gap? If we can't, then it's already in. If we can, then we bring it back to this board and then this board can consider whether or not they want to make that amendment.
The only, the only concern I have with that trustee Gator is none of our boards and commissions are alike. So trying to broad stroke something like that, um, defining inefficiency, I think would be very difficult if impossible because for say the planning commission has a lot of stuff on their plate and has a lot of stuff going on all the time. Every meeting is packed with something that is very significant. So an inefficiency with that board may be different than the parks advisory board because, you know, the parks advisory board is strictly an advisory board. It's not a, it doesn't pass, you know, um, any of the land code stuff. It doesn't do any of that. So an inefficiency in that case may be less stringent because, you know, it's more of a volunteer and, you know, try to help come up with good, you know, good ideas for parks and stuff like that. And then at the same time, the, um, board of adjustments, which meets very, very few times a year. You know, what's inefficiency for that? In my mind, that'd be you miss a meeting, you're gone because we only meet three times a year at the most. So you know what I mean? So I, I just am concerned with trying to broad, broad stroke it in, uh, an ordinance versus letting it be kind of handled within each board and commission. They can define themselves, what they feel is an inefficiency and can put that in their bylaws. Cause I believe every, every board and commission has a bylaw, set of bylaws. And then ultimately the board of trustees, whether it's any of us or down the road, whoever the board of trustees are the ultimate judge and jury. They may not agree with whatever that particular board that wants to remove somebody, they might not agree with it and tell them, no. We don't care what your bylaws say. We don't think this person needs to go. So that's my only concern is broad stroking it. And I understand the concerns without having definitions, but at the same time, you don't want to pigeonhole yourself because if you put a number on it, then that should be the number regardless who you are, you know what I mean? So if you miss four meetings, you're gone. That there shouldn't, if it's in the ordinance, there's no, in my mind, leeway. If you had a sick family member, you had family emergencies or anything like that, that's been taken away. You know, that type of, um, leeway has been taken away because now it's an ordinance, you know, you don't get to necessarily set an ordinance and then decide, well, you know, that was not the best idea. Let's go ahead and, you know, overlook that one. That's not the way I think an ordinance should be, should be, uh, looked at. So that's my only thoughts on that.
And I think that's why my request was not, let's try to change it now is let's pass it as is. And, and that might be the conversations I have is, yeah, you're right. There's, there's no way to do this, but, um, again, it would make me feel a lot more comfortable if I could at least take some time to go through that with them. But again, at the same time, I don't, to Mr. Garcia's point, I, my goal is not to try and make things harder on the board, but it would make me feel a lot better if we could at least, I could be, I wasn't part of all the discussions. So going through that to see if there's a way to bridge the gap, maybe there's not.
I think that if we were to approve this as a board as written, then that should be the acceptable move forward. And then after approving it as a board and deciding that as a board, then taking actions to change it independently would not be effective use of taxpayer money to pay for a legal counsel and time on our town administrator. I say if we approve it, we approve it. Um, if we don't, then we take it back and look at it. But as is, if we do approve it tonight, that should be what we move forward with.
Okay. That being said, no further comments. I'd like to go ahead and put it up for a motion ordinance number ten dash twenty twenty one, repealing, revising and re adopting article thirteen, chapter two of the Wellington municipal code concerning the Wellington Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Gator?
No.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee White House?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay. Good discussion though. Look forward to seeing work through the bylaws. That's really where it's at. Okay. Something comes up, we'll bring it back. All right. Um, that's it for action items. We're moving on to reports. Town attorney.
Um, in some of my work, I've been, uh, working with Lammert County, uh, Fort Collins, Loveland as part of the regional opioid abatement, um, governance structure. Many municipalities across the country, states and counties sued the manufacturers of opioids and there's a multi-billion dollar settlement that's being worked out between attorneys general from across the country and, uh, those parties. So there's billions of dollars that will be flowing out to the states, um, for, to correct the harms or hopefully remedy some of the harms of the opioid epidemic. Some of those funds will be directed directly to local governments, um, to spend on opioid abatement. The process for getting those funds is it will flow to the state. The town will have to sign an M O U at the attorney general's office that we want to participate in this structure and then municipalities of ten thousand or more, um, so Wellington fits into that. We'll get a seat on a regional board that will oversee how those funds are spent. So in this case, it's pretty, uh, exciting for us and for me. It's Fort Collins, Loveland and Wellington are the municipalities and, and Lammert County is the other, the government. Only municipalities of ten thousand or more get a vote on how those dollars are spent. So it's pretty, it's, it's a neat opportunity for Wellington to really do some good and, and see where those, make sure those dollars come to Wellington. And, and help the people of Wellington. So, uh, it's something I've been working on for the last couple of months. Um, and actually we'll, I'm bringing it up now because there's a good chance, once the M O U is finalized, um, and the regional governance structure is finalized, there's going to be a flurry of things that need to be approved and adopted. Really the town's in a position where it's in our best interest probably to sign on to these M O Us because it's, it's one of the best ways to kind of harness the regional power of those dollars. So something that we bring back, um, possibly in the next few weeks. Um, on another update, um, for me personally, um, I, my wife is having a kid in two weeks, um, the day after our next meeting. Which means I will not be working on town of Wellington tasks. If you need anything, um, feel free to call me, but if I don't immediately return your call because I am sleeping, uh, feel free to give Brad March a call. Um, if you send an email to me, I'd recommend you copy Brad as well. Um, I probably will be here at the next meeting. Um, we'll see how that goes. So.
All right. Congratulations. Town administrator.
So next Tuesday, you have a Tuesday off. Our wastewater treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant and water treatment plant, sixty percent items are not prepared and not ready, um, to present next Tuesday. So we've rescheduled those. The water treatment plant will come October twelfth, wastewater treatment plant will come October twenty sixth. So wanted to make that a public statement that we will not be having a work session next Tuesday. We'll put that on our website and get it out as needed and put an agenda on our website saying meeting canceled. So that way if anybody looks up and tries to find an agenda, they'll see that it's canceled. So that's the update I have for you.
Okay. Appreciate night off. We come up with something, I guess maybe we, maybe we'll do something else. All right.
Have a blast.
Okay. Staff, anything from your staff? We got some August report that we need, that we need to hear about bills. Anybody need to talk about bills?
So I would like for Bob to come and introduce Megan if he would please. We're not, we're not scheduled to have employee introductions tonight, but Megan is here and I would like for Bob to make that introduction.
Wondering if that was going to happen, but, uh, nice to have the opportunity to introduce Megan Smith. Um, she's a new deputy director of public work. She brings a whole lot of water resource experience and other experience to the town. Comes to us from, uh, Fort Collins, which was nice to, to have somebody from Fort Collins, the town of city of Fort Collins, uh, that we could bring on board. So with that, and I'll just let Megan say a few words.
Kind of on the fly. So you can witness me think on my feet briefly. Um, again, Megan Smith, I'm really excited. This is, uh, the beginning of my third week. The first week was, um, a breath of fresh air. The second week was, um, really overwhelming. And then now I feel like I'm, I'm just now getting my feet underneath me and come walk forward. So this is my first meeting, obviously with you guys, and it's been, a pleasure to see how you work together and, um, look forward to to coming to more of these meetings and helping shepherd along our water related initiatives, most specifically at utilities and water and sewer. So.
We're looking forward to getting into that.
I think it's coming up next.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Lammert County sheriff, got anything? You're good? Okay. Board members got anything you want to talk about? Oh, you're fine. That's all right. I appreciate it. Go ahead.
Um, although you guys will be enjoying a week off next week on Tuesday night, I will be attending the C M L conference in Westminster for three days, four.
in Westminster for three days, four days. So enjoy your meeting. I'm really excited about it actually. So, um, yeah, hoping to make lots of connections, get a lot of best practices, bring them back to Wellington. So I'll be happy to make a report on that when I return.
Be there for Wednesday, Thursday and part of Friday.
Uh, yes, last Saturday, Main Streets in the town had a cleanup. I was, uh, Melissa and I, we did some work down there. A whole bunch of folks out there and, uh, it really looks a lot better. So, um, it was fun and, and it definitely has an impact. So I thought, I think it's a great thing. Want to thank Callie for organizing that.
I just had a question. I haven't heard anything about the Box Elder Creek incident. Is there any updates or is it still kind of being investigated or just kind of, just been kind of curious about it, especially since we've had a couple of rainfalls since the initial, initial incident. So.
That was like day two. So, um, I actually was in touch with, um, through that whole process, we did identify it was a a discharge from a dairy, so from one of our ag producers regionally, it was an inadvertent discharge. They were incredibly swiftly responsive. They had it sealed off and fixed that day. We did have contact with C D P H E as the, uh, kind of permitting and advisory state level contact. They came down, um, took some samples, uh, three different places along, two different places along Box Elder, and then again in the ditch that was discharging into Box Elder. I did speak with them today as a matter of fact, I should have, I should be receiving in our email box even, but I can pass along to Patty. Results of the testing that they did. Unfortunately, I was told today that the turbidity was so high that they weren't able to do um, a full amount of bacterial testing. So E. coli. But the ammonia levels were so high that they were very confident that it was wastewater discharge. It wasn't a you know, other kind of spill or industrial spill or anything like that. They're, they're going through, uh, the regulatory process with the agricultural producer. And really there's not a great deal else for us to do related to that other than um, I have to admit, the experience with ag producer was really good. They were very swift to act and the last couple of times that I had been through Box Elder, it was just clearing up very rapidly. And I wanted to go after the rains last night and I was actually running late this morning and didn't get a chance to stop off. So I was curious to know if it flushed anymore into the fields as well or into the, to the ditch and then, but I don't think so. It has been, we received photographer photographs of the fix and then they will have to do a permanent fix as part of their regulatory, um, feedback from the state.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You bet.
We got something else on here called.
So we were, um, trustee McDonald had requested to put the Timic property update um, on the agenda. I hesitate to bring that forward tonight without her because this was something that she had requested. We'll move it to the next meeting.
All right. That brings us to item F. We have an executive session scheduled here tonight. But anything? I got zero, seven, forty eight. I have any other, no, there's just, can I get a motion of going to executive session?
I make a motion, go into executive session and have fun. To read out the purpose of executive session?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Do you want to remove or do you want me to do it? Trustee White House? Okay. I move that we move into executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators pursuant to section twenty four dash six dash four oh two, four E C R S regarding negotiations with North Pooter Irrigation Company as required by C R S section twenty four dash six dash four oh two, two, D five, two A and two E. The executive session proceedings will be electronically recorded and the record will be preserved for ninety days through December thirteenth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee White House.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes.